Mayor, we are.
Excellent. Uh, today is February eighth, twenty twenty-two for our city council work session calling to order. Uh, to notice to the public that, uh, city council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on any of the agendized items. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor D Z.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
I'm here somewhere.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Present, present.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Uh, thank you. Councilmember Sweet, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My honor, please stand if you are able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. And, uh, uh, Councilmember Aslan, our mission statement.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And, uh, Vice Mayor, our, uh, land acknowledgement, please.
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That brings us to agenda item number four for public participation. I do understand we do have one speaker.
Yes, Mayor, I have Don Rodriguez. Don, you can go ahead and unmute and give your comments now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
I am here. Thank you. Thank you. I apologize. Thank you. I am here testifying before Mayor DC, Vice Mayor Daggett, Councilmember Salas, Councilmember Aslan, Councilmember Sweet, and Councilmember McCarthy, because I trust people, not government. Employees stay longer than elected officials, which is why our leaders need to form a positive work culture. Good people need to be hired at the start, and employees need to be held accountable because even small decisions affect everyone. One way to do this is by having employees wear badges with their department and the name of their supervisor. Our family thanks you and your families for carrying the burden of the city all day, every day, really. These facts are hard to hear and harder to say. Our family appreciates that no matter what choices you make, it will be the wrong choice for someone, right? The worst part is having to deal with the few city and county engineers who add fuel to imaginary fires by feeding off lies without even considering video evidence and overwhelming eyewitness testimony. In more than one case, they have blamed others for their mistakes instead of taking responsibility and bravely relying on science, common sense, and tested engineering standards. We're willing to live with compromise if it is fair, and the same rules are followed for everyone. That's why it was disturbing last week to hear about all the secret meetings that are scheduled. Decisions need to be justified and transparent because no one can do everything alone, and last summer has shown that some workers need positive peer pressure to be fair. For example, Linda Vista was not shut down like Dorthea. Rather, it was reinforced with tons of rocks and the entire area was cleaned. A two-hundred-thousand-dollar covert was added, and the culverts did not have grades. These were cleaned as well, the culverts. The major players never took the time to do it or weren't around anywhere during the floods like they, like everyone was at Linda Vista. If just one of these six points had been done at Dorthea, it would have made a huge difference. After the flooding, we examined the water route. We went the whole entire water route and shared with everyone that would listen, but no one heard us because if they had the extent of the August seventeenth damage could have been avoided. And I'd also like to say that I have noticed, uh, the new website today, which is really exciting. Thank you. Um, I'm looking forward to spending more time on that, um, as. Twenty-nine seconds. I don't know what happened. Can you hear me? Did I go out at any time? Can you guys still hear me?
Uh, you went out for a little bit about the last ten seconds, so, uh, if we could revert the clock a little.
Well, I just want, I'm sorry.
Oh, please proceed.
Don, I think you cut out again. I'm. We're not able to hear you.
Uh, Donna, if you'd like to turn off your video, I'd like to give you the additional thirty seconds that we can hear, hear you. So, um, yeah, if you could turn that on and then, no problem.
My, my internet went out, guys. I just, oh, if I read my whole prepared statement, but I'd just like to say thank you. I do see the work that everybody's putting forth, and I've been getting emails. And for all the city employees that, um, called me and expressed, um, that's between us, but just in general to everyone that called and, um, has been helping answering questions, I just wanted to say thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And we really appreciate you, your continued advocacy, continuously making sure that we are staying on point, um, wi- with the flooding area. Uh, I, we really appreciate it, uh, all of us on council. So, thank you. Um, i- is there any other public participants for this section?
Mayor, that was our last one for now.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to agenda item number five, which is the review of drafted February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting. Uh, Council, do we have any questions, any concerns? Uh, Councilmember Salas.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask staff if there's an opportunity for, for, uh, council discussion, like a work session before the housing plan is approved because, uh, uh, as, uh, agendas, it's, uh, it will be discussed and approved in one meeting, which will be, uh, next Tuesday, uh, February fifteen. This procedural question. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Salzberg, our, um, Director Dar or anyone who might be able to answer that.
Mayor, this is Stacy Salzberg. I would defer to Ms. Dar or, um, Mr. Clifton on, on scheduling that. I can certainly fit it in if that's the, the need from a scheduling standpoint.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. As I understand the question, it would be for a work session preceding the discussion on the affordable housing plan. I'm wondering if, uh, I can interpret that to be some opportunity for general discussion, uh, of the plan and before actually consideration of the plan. Am I correct?
You read my mind, Mr. Clifton.
Thank you. Um, Mayor, Council, I don't see any problem in, uh, adjusting the schedule and making sure we allocate plenty of time for a general discussion on this in addition to the action item that is slated. I, I take it that will accomplish the, the stated request. An alternative would, would be to bump it out past another work session, but I, I, I think I could speak for staff here in saying that there's a desire to, to keep the, so maybe just adjusting the agenda next week would accomplish that.
Thank you. I, I'd suggest that we, um, continue with it on, uh, Tuesday, and we can have a good, ripe discussion then. And if it's decided upon by council that we need further discussion or further input, then at that point, we can take a vote to extend the actual uh, adoption for a later date. But that we keep it on the agenda for, for the discussion, and if it needs more, you know, it's a very important topic, so happy to, uh, yeah, play that accordingly. Uh, City Attorney?
No issues from a legal perspective with the proposed course of action, so good to go.
Thank you. And happy to open it up to other council members if they'd like to, um, um, provide input. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, Councilmember Salas for that idea. So, what's being discussed that Councilmember Salas is raising is the idea of pushing back the adoption of the ten-year housing plan so that we can basically have a work session first, maybe in a couple of weeks, and then, um, maybe in three weeks, then have it be adopted. Um, Mayor, is my, is my understanding correct in that?
Uh, I'll let Councilmember Salas speak for, uh, herself on that. That's what I understood, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, uh, all I seek is, is, uh, you know, a robust council discussion and, uh, and public input at the work session, you know? But we have a packed agenda for next week as well, so, you know, just mindful of, uh, that, you know, that, uh, we have, uh, a packed agenda next week, and I hope that the discussion will not be, um, it will not be, um, how would you call it, uh, shortened or done in haste. An incoherent discussion, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay, City Manager, do you have something to add to that?
Yes, I think that a path forward to accomplish everything here is to keep it on the agenda for next week. Uh, make sure we allocate plenty of time for it, noting that it is a packed agenda, and we can and will on council of this next week, we can be a little nimble on this, as, as we should be, and ask for a continuance of the, if it looks like council would like to have more discussion, or if there's more discussion, uh, to engage with the community. Um, so while it will stay on next week's agenda, uh, we do not have to have finality next week, so I would encourage that we go ahead, keep it on the agenda, have a robust discussion as requested, and we'll see where, where that takes us time-wise with the opportunity to ex- to, to continue it. Sterling will guide us in the process for that, uh, if needed. Does that sound reasonable?
Mayor, if I can jump in, I'll just say really quick while I have the mic. City Manager, you read my mind. Uh, that's exactly what I was thinking we should do, and that makes perfect sense to me, and hopefully Councilmember Salas will, um, be in support of that approach. And, and Councilmember Salas and to Mayor and Council on the community, if we need more time, we can take more time. But I, I think moving ahead with the, the schedule makes sense to me. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. And, um, yeah, I'll just note that, you know, on any agenda item or, you know, when we're running a packed schedule, um, any council member, please feel free to put a motion for continuance on something that is important, where, um, we do need further discussion. That is always an option on any of our agenda items. Uh, so I would like to keep this on for next week, and if it does come to that, that we're running late, we do need to, you know, it's an extremely important topic. Um, that is always an option for any of us on council to, um, propose, so. With that, happy to take any Caesar cues in the box here and, uh, press on here in a minute if not. All right, with that, uh, we will move on to the next, not, I, not agenda item number six, which is our state legislative update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, let me go ahead and share my screen and get that set up here. All right, you guys.
Yep, please proceed.
Perfect. All right. Well, um, good afternoon, Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. I'm joined tonight also by Todd, our state lobbyist. Um, our state legislative session started about a month ago on January tenth, and there has been, um, a lot of activity since then. So we wanted to touch base at the beginning of the session and, um, just let you know about a few bills that are of interest for Flagstaff, and then forward, we will provide updates on an as-meeted or as-requested basis, um, from here on out. And the bills that we'll talk about tonight, for the most part, are bills that have appeared on a committee or we think might have some forward movement in the future. Um, there are, of course, other bills of concern that we're watching, um, but are included on this list, so it's, um, non-exhaustive. So, uh, this slide highlights some bills that are in opposition to the council's priorities and would be, um, very impactful to Flagstaff if they passed. The first is twenty-three sixteen, which passed out of, uh, Government Elections Committee last week. And this may look similar as a, a similar bill, or certainly may look familiar as a similar bill was introduced last year as well. Um, it would prohibit cities from banning weapons in public buildings unless, um, electronic weapons screening devices like metal detectors are present. So this is both a preemption and an unfunded mandate. Um, next, we wanted to flag for you House Bill twenty-four fifty-three, which passed out of its committee last week and is on the, um, House Consent Calendar for tomorrow. This bill would prohibit cities from requiring masks or face coverings to be worn on their own premises. So, um, this is obviously something we think should be within the city's purview to decide as it is, um, city property. Next, wanted to flag for you House Bill twenty-three seventy-four. Um, this is a very complex bill, um, and it seems to be coming up in response to an attempt to depict, uh, local zoning as one of the causes of the housing shortage and affordable housing crisis, and, um, to propose buy-right zoning as a solution to this. Um, so while this bill does allocate eighty-nine million to the Housing Trust Fund, it would also basically preempt, uh, municipalities and all sorts of housing matters. Um, it would eliminate single-family zoning. It would give developers to ignore local requirements such as setbacks, maximum heights, or required building materials. It would, um, eliminate review and approval processes by citizens, planning commissions, and city councils. And municipalities would be required to approve, uh, multifamily developments in many zoning areas, uh, among many other preemptions. So obviously, there, there are a lot of negative things in this bill, and, um, it doesn't really seem to be geared towards supporting affordable housing. However, the bill does have bipartisan sponsors, so we're watching it closely, um, and are lobbying against it. It was on a committee agenda today. It was taken off. Um, it might come back in the future, so we will, um, definitely keep an eye on this one. Lastly, we have House Bill twenty-three seventy-five, which is on a committee agenda for tomorrow. And this is another preemption bill that would require cities to use their state shared income tax exclusively for public safety, uh, which is defined as police, fire, and emergency services. If a city were to use, uh, shared revenues for other purposes, that amount would then be withheld by the state treasurer in the following year. So this, um, is, of course, negative in that it prevents local leaders from budgeting, um, towards their own local priorities. There are, uh, some positive bills that have been introduced so far this year that we'd like to highlight. First, twelve seventy, um, appropriate three million dollars to the, uh, State Parks Heritage Fund, which is a very important source of funding for our Parks and Recreation Division as they apply for goods for, uh, new and aging infrastructure. We'd also like to highlight House Bill twenty-six sixty-three, which addresses the topic of short-term rentals, um, which I didn't know is, is very salient here in Flagstaff. There are a handful of short-term rental bills this year. Some are sponsored more by the industry, and some have been crafted with input from cities and towns to help address some of the issues that we face, and this is one of those latter bills. Um, this particular bill would allow cities to limit the number of short-term rentals as a percentage of their housing stock, and it would also give cities additional tools to regulate STRs, such as the ability to require a permit or license, um, the ability to require a valid TPT license, uh, and it gives us a bit more, um, teeth in that it replaces a fining structure for verified violations with the ability for the Department of Revenue to licenses if there are, uh, multiple violations. So there are still a ton of negotiations, you know, ahead in this arena, and, um, we will definitely be advocating for more local control in this area. And then the last bill I'd like to highlight is one that isn't, um, mentioned explicitly within your legislative priorities, so thought we would bring it up tonight. A House Bill twenty-one twenty-five on tobacco. This bill would change minimum age for sale of tobacco products from eighteen to the age set by the federal government, which is twenty-one. And, uh, the bill would also require unannounced compliance checks and require penalties and fines for violations. It would establish through, uh, the Department of Health Services a tobacco sales license for vendors, uh, again with penalties for those vendors who do sell without a license. And most importantly, this bill does not preempt local governments from having our own license, um, or conducting our own compliance checks or regulating tobacco products. So it is indeed, uh, very, very similar to our own T-twenty-one ordinance here in Flagstaff. So if council is on board, we can, um, support this bill. And then the last thing I wanted to discuss tonight is a request that was made at last week's meeting by Councilmember, uh, for a request letter for twenty-three ninety-six. This bill would appropriate approximately, I think it's forty-nine million, from the, uh, General Fund to ADOT for specific highway and road projects, and Flagstaff's Lone Tree Corridor project is called out for two-point-six million specifically in this bill. Um, I sent out that draft letter in an email yesterday, so, again, if the council is supportive, we can, um, move forward with that. So that's all I have tonight. Um, let me know if, if you have any questions or comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, Council, any comments, questions this time? Uh, Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Ms. Langley, for the presentation. Um, yes, as an update on, uh, House Bill two-three-six, it was approved by the House Committee on Transportation and Technology, eleven to one, uh, and, uh, recommended to be, uh, forwarded to the Appropriations Committee. However, um, I have heard that, um, um, the, the Chairperson of the House Committee on, uh, Appropriations and other legislators have expressed their desire to limit, uh, transportation, um, transportation, uh, projects in the state budget to state highways excluding local roads. Uh, the bill is currently not scheduled for consideration by the committee, hence, you know, we have to, to, um, to advocate not only to, to our representatives re- uh, representing our, uh, LD six, but, uh, hopefully members of the, uh, Appropriation Committee to at least have this discussion on the floor for appropriations. And again, this bill is supported by ten metropolitan planning organizations and councils of governments representing rural greater Arizona. Thank you. And then I have another, uh, House Bill that I wanna, uh, put forward in terms of, um, potential support, uh, after this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. We'll go to Vice Mayor, and once we wrap it up on the current ones discussed, we can, uh, yeah, definitely get back with you on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Um, and thank you, Sarah. Great job. Um, this looks, uh, wonderful. I support everything on here, and I think for the, the housing advocates among us, um, we need to let the legislature know that Arizona cities are in housing crisis, and that we'd like to see some legislation that supports our ability to create affordable housing as well as just having that local control to spend money the way we, we need to spend it. Um, it's just, it's disappointing to see these bills come forward year after year, but thank you for, um, keeping up with it, and, um, I'm in support.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I did have a question on the, um, HB twenty-six sixty-three, um, for the short-term rentals. Um, is that bipartisan-sponsored, or is that looking to be rather, uh, divisionary between the, uh, two parties?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this bill is sponsored by Representative Kavanaugh. Um, it hasn't been assigned to a committee yet, so we haven't really got a feel of who would support it. Um, affordable housing this year is definitely a bipartisan issue. Um, both sides are aware that, that things need to be done, and short-term rental seems to be one of those issues that we're seeing a little bit of, um, people getting together on. So, um, I think it remains to be seen. Todd, feel free to jump in if you have any other, uh, comments on that, but we will definitely, um, watch the whole short-term rental debate as it evolves.
Yeah, Kavanaugh's bill is, is an interesting animal. Um, i- it's one of the ones that has the most legs to get to the end point. You know, short-term rentals is quickly becoming a nonpartisan issue, Mayor. And what I mean by that is that everyone's hearing that they all have issues with it with municipalities and their districts, and so, um, you know, this might be a good time to point out that Representative Blackman introduced a bill, Senator, uh, Rogers introduced a bill that would just basically revert everything back to local control. Those bills have not been assigned. They're not moving anyplace. And so what Sarah and I are doing are looking for the next best option, and, and Kavanaugh's bill, um, you know, he's been a player in it. He's been a player in it, and so he's going to, he's probably gonna have this bill assigned to his committee, and there probably will be a bipartisan, um, support of the bill, and there probably will be bipartisan opposition. It's just a matter of finding the right legislators with the right mix to say, okay, when can we get something across the finish line? Um, you know, finally, I'll, I'll, I'll close with this. The, the, the other element in the picture is the governor. And the governor stripped out all local authority to begin with, and so what is he willing to put back in? And that's what Mr. Kavanaugh is walking that fine line to say, here's what we can get to pass the legislature, and then here's what the governor is willing to sign. And so we're, you know, we're, we're trying to work with him, and we're trying to stay close to him because we think he is one of the people who can get us across the finish line.
Thank you. Uh, that, yeah, that helps, and I'm glad to see something that has the to get through that will allow us to have, uh, uh, some means of, um, addressing this really, really big issue for our community. Um, I do see, uh, City Manager has his hand up.
Good, Mayor. Uh, Todd, good to see you. I was wondering why we have you here, if I could get your comment on something, um, or my hand here. Sarah Langley and I had a discussion earlier about House Bill twenty-six seventy-four. Um, and I know we see bills like this every year that purport to, uh, preempt a lot of land use, uh, abilities and authorities at the local level. This one, uh, kind of raises the eyebrows. Um, and while it, uh, starts at, with, with preamble language that, that states that affordable housing is a matter of statewide concern, of course, thereby preempting local government, it goes much further and, and I'm still reading through it, but, uh, as written would at least appear to totally strip local government of its ability to zone, uh, residentially and to do anything that would, uh, resemble obligations or requirements, uh, in the realm of affordable housing. Um, this, without really any need to elaborate, would have profound impact on all communities, but certainly Flagstaff. And I was just wondering if you could share with us your thoughts about this bill and whether it's likely to garner any traction at all. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, um, Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, Mr. Manager. So, eh, in the time of COVID, my wife and I sometimes talk about how people use COVID as an excuse. And it's, well, we're not giving you good customer service because of COVID, and we can't do this because of COVID. Well, this is very similar to what we're seeing with, with twenty-six seventy-four. The, the real estate industry, the building industry is coming together, and they are saying, okay, we want to solve affordable housing, and the way we do that is by eliminating any of your authority for zoning. Well, it's a red herring. I mean, it's, it, it quite simply is a red herring, and so it's, it's, uh, we've seen it before. It's a bipartisan bill. It's been introduced. We've seen it pulled off an agenda in the last twenty-four hours. It's a bipartisan bill. It's been introduced. We've seen it pulled off an agenda in the last twenty four hours. We don't know why yet. I'm, we're still working on that, Sarah. I'm sorry. I haven't, I don't have an answer for you. But but we're working on it. The fact of the matter is, this is a huge lift. And it's a long process. And so. You know, are we gonna kill it in the first committee hearing? Probably not. But I also wonder, why did they pull it off the agenda all of a sudden? If they had the votes, they should have gone forward. And so that gets into the sort of the bloody knuckle knife fight. Aspects of it to. You know, every vote that comes up, they have to pass and and that's a heavy lift for them. Will it see the light of day? Yeah, it's, I mean, they dropped it. Had a press conference about it, saw a lot of newspaper articles about it. I don't see this seeing the light of day at the at the end of, by the end of the game, I don't think this crosses the goal line. And so I'm I'm sort of. And and I said this to Sarah earlier today when we were talking when I was at the Capitol. It's not to say we shouldn't fight it. We have to fight. We have to go after it and and we have to go after this with a vengeance. This is not something that we sit back and watch something. Die under its own weight. I mean, there are certain bills and I'm like, it's not worth the effort. This is worth the effort and we should kill it and we should make sure it's dead because the other thing is. And and my times at Department of Real Estate, I dealt with these lobbyists. These people are tenacious, right? And so they will come back and and if we defeat this bill, we have to watch for a striker. We have to watch for a strike everything amendment. We have to watch for this coming back in other ways and we have to watch for it being finessed. So that they try and get more votes. This is not something, if you all, if you all somehow tell me to support this bill, I'm gonna question. What the, you know, what what the principles of of mean for for Flagstaff? And so it's, it's sort of like, do I think it's gonna see the light of day? No, I don't. But I also hate the bill and we have to go after it. I don't, Greg, I hope I then answered your question. I don't know.
Thank you. I was actually hoping to invite a little bit of narrative for council's benefit and frankly, for the benefit of our community. And I think you provided that narrative. So thank you.
Thank you, Todd. I didn't want to ask the likelihood of the H B twenty four fifty three S B twelve ninety eight. With the mask requirements on where the likelihood that that may see the light of day.
Yeah, that's a harder one to gauge. There is significant. I don't want to say opposition because I think that gives it a little bit of like there's a dividing line. There's. I mean, if there's opposition, it's opposition to science. You know, I I think there's a tremendous amount of animosity towards. People trying to address the pandemic. And that's what these bills are a product of. And so we have to watch them going through and. It it, at the end of the day, it has to be, okay, is this something we? You know, are we gonna die on the hill on this? You know, we can die, there are many hills we can die on. But this might be one of them. I mean, it seems to me. That there ought to be a level of authority given to local governments. You know, because that's what we've chosen to implement in the United States. I mean, it's whether it's your village leader, your mayor or your your county supervisor or your governor. People ought to be able to say, look, you gotta wear a mask when you go out. I don't think those sentiments are necessarily shared by. By a majority of the legislature. I will say it's probably not. You know, seventy five percent or eighty percent. I think it's probably fifty one percent to forty nine percent. But there, I would say that we are on the losing end of that battle. And I don't want to leave you with the. Opinion that, oh, we can kill these bills. We certainly can vehemently oppose them. But I also think that you need to be prepared for the idea that you might be stripped of this authority.
Well, potentially, I'll just, I won't get into legalities of it. Or Sterling will be chiming in here soon. But the fact is that you're, the level of hypocrisy saying that businesses should have the right. Or to say you have to or don't have to wear a mask in your business. Yet telling us that city facilities that are controlled by the city, not the state. Don't have that same right to our own property. So just throwing that out there. We'll see how these things move forward, but definitely appreciate you bringing this to attention and. Keeping your finger on the pulse on really all of these, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I think Sarah did a good job coming up with this list. I think this is, gives you a very good taste of what we're facing at the legislature. I'm in touch with Sarah. Lord, if it's not daily, it's it's, you know, multiple times a week and she's she's on the ball for it and and you have a, you have a good public affairs director. Unfortunately. You know, the rest of the state does not see things the way we do. And so that's that's the only. Downside I see, but Mayor, you're preaching the choir. I understand.
Yeah, I didn't know that they didn't think the same way down south. Yeah. I'll stop being snarky. Councilmember Shimoney.
Oh, my gosh. What an interesting discussion we're having. Todd, welcome. Thank you for being with us. Sarah, great work. And thank you for your leadership on all this. Yeah, I really appreciate the discussion. You know, I appreciate the list that we've come up with. And, you know, I'm thinking about especially the ones that the bills that we have opposition to. You know, Sterling, my mind goes directly to you and I have a bunch of legal questions about these things, but before we jump into an executive session. Maybe we should let this play out a little bit further, given that this is early, but. City Manager, I agree with you, twenty H B twenty six seventy four. It's so, all these are very concerning to me. And I, as you said, Todd, you know, what do we do knowing that we're within the state of Arizona and the legislators are what they are? And I guess my question to you, Todd, is where is the League on these things? Have you seen much action from the League? And in my mind, Mayor and City Manager and Sarah goes, you know, to the the idea of working through the League. And maybe even inviting a League representative to a upcoming. Update that we have that like, you know, in the coming months. Just because that's that's where we can organize and potentially find, you know, support with other communities and other cities. To oppose some of these things and have any sort of fighting chance, but. Todd, have you seen anything from the League that you can give us an update on in regards specifically to these bills?
I can. Sarah, do you mind if I go ahead or?
Go for it, Todd.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, the League, like any association, the League is balancing multiple demands on their time. But the League of Cities and Towns is terribly effective at advocating. And so there are things like the twenty six seventy four is a perfect example. It's not a Republican or Democrat issue. It's it's an authority issue. It's it's why would you strip this authority from cities and towns? And so even the Republican leaning cities with the League are are. Telling them, go after it. And they're doing, they're doing an effective and efficient job, an effective job. They're doing. They're doing, they're doing gangbusters on it and I'm following their lead. I'm I'm telling them, okay, how can I help you? You know, how, what do you need? And so they they work primarily through Sarah, which is appropriate. But the League of Cities and Towns is, I mean, their investment that the city puts in. Is is, I mean, it pays, it pays bounties and and so if. If there's some sort of discussion or if there's something like, well, is the League being effective? I would tell you, yes, the League is terribly effective. They're good at what they do. Tom Belshi knows what he's doing. You know, Tom Savage, they all, the whole staff, they don't do. Half halfway job, you know, they do a good job. And so they're there. We're in communication with them. I'm not trying to talk out of a contract position, but they do a very good job and they're they're very powerful allies. The trouble with the League is when, when they say. What happens when they get swayed in another direction that's adverse to Flagstaff? You need to have someone on hand to protect Flagstaff's interests. Now, that's not the case this session, but that's why I'm here, you know.
Quick follow up. That's great to hear, Todd. That gives me reassurance at least that we have a solid voice that's working with other cities as well. Okay, so a couple of other points really quick.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Shimoney. I do see Sterling had put a C in the chat box. Just want him to chime in if. Yeah, needed before we continue. City Attorney? Well, I'm not hearing anything on his end, so it must not, he may be having internet issues, so I will, yeah.
Well, I'll speak for him. No, I'm just kidding. I can't, I won't do that. But moving on, I know, right? Moving on to my my point. Council and Sarah and Todd, there's that, there's that bill that Representative Blackman introduced that helps. Complete the funding for the D C C, the Downtown Connection Center. Wondering if, Sarah, that could be something that we add to the list of things that we support. As a council body moving forward. Sarah, do you have any thought or comment on that?
Yeah, Councilmember Shimoney, I've actually already signed in support of that bill and the state's request to speak system, so. So that's publicly out there and we're definitely supporting that bill.
Very good. And my last question, Sarah and Todd, is regarding process. If if you can just speak, you know, I think this is probably a Todd question, but Sarah, I'm sure you can answer this too. Just in regards to just the general timeline of all this and just reminding me and the council about. When is the the heat of this all? When is it like, when are the decisions gonna be made? Just so we understand where we can really leverage our voices in this most appropriately. And and Sarah, I guess the other part of that question is. Are we gonna be having regular updates at some point, you know, when things get into the thick of it? Or how are we as a council and as a city gonna be engaged through this process this this year?
Well, procedurally, I'll tell you, the the legislature is. I think there's one more week to hear bills in the House of Origin. So when you introduce a bill, you're, and and I don't mean to be patronizing, I just want to kind of run through the process with you. When you, when you introduce your bill in the House of Origin, it has to have a hearing in those committees and then it goes across the the courtyard, right? And then the House sends their bills to the Senate, the Senate sends their bills to the House. So next week is the last week to hear bills in your House of Origin. And so that's the first deadline. Some of you may have read in the media about an election bill that was assigned to twelve committees is the first time in in memory. Probably the first time in history, but certainly the first time in memory. When a speaker has assigned a bill to twelve standing committees in their own chamber. So there was no way that bill was gonna be heard and he sent a distinct message. So in a week's time, we will be able to whittle down the number of bills in consideration. And we'll have a much greater understanding about bills that have legs and bills that don't. And at that point, you know, Sarah and I will talk and and we'll kind of go through. I mean, how many bills were introduced? You know, thirty six hundred, four thousand? You know, we'll go through and kind of whittle down which ones we really need to be concerned about. So that's gonna be procedurally, that's sort of the first milestone. And we'll be able to look at where the bills are that we can fight. And then Sarah, I'm gonna say one more thing and then I'll turn it over to you about the rest of it, but. The other thing that kind of goes along with that is. You know, representatives are less likely to vote against representative sponsored bills. You know, you you kind of look at bills and say, okay, well, we can kill that, but we have to kill it in the other chamber. And so that's where. It's not the fun and it's not the action. It's that's where the work starts. And so we will, we will start like, you know, rallying people to say, okay, this is a bad idea. And here's why. And so that's when we'll get into that in the next four weeks after that. So I, Sarah, I don't know if you have other stuff to answer. I'll mute myself because I'll probably say something stupid.
Thanks, Todd. I appreciate the overview of the process. And Councilmember Shimoney, just to answer the second part of your question. So we definitely heard from council last year that maybe, you know, regularly timed legislative updates are not the most effective use of your time during our very busy. Council agendas, but I think that the system we have works really well. You know, Todd sends out weekly updates, written updates Friday, that kind of recap everything that's happened that week. The League also holds a legislative update call for elected officials every Monday. Which gives you an overview of what the League is focusing on and then you can see, you know, what Todd is focusing on. I think that this allows us to focus our energies on where they'd be most effective, you know, lobbying or advocating for for certain bills. Also, you know, things move incredibly quickly. So even if we did have regular updates, you know, the timing may not really work because things just happen so fast. So that's really the importance of the legislative priorities that we passed in January. They really give us kind of the guiding. Guiding force move forward and then anything that doesn't fall cleanly within that, for example, the tobacco bill. We'll definitely come back to you for direction and and support on.
Okay, very good. I appreciate that. And this will be an interesting cycle. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You, Councilmember, Councilmember McCarthy?
I just want to say that I support the oppose and support recommendation we just heard from Steph. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. City Attorney, did you want to chime in?
So, yeah, sorry, I got kicked out of teams there. I just wanted to mention and response or not really response, but just commenting on. Councilmember Shimoney's question about possible legal issues to give advice on an executive session. As you mentioned, Councilmember Shimoney, I do think it is a little early in the game for that and we should let this play out a little further and then see what comes and then we could consider that.
Thank you, City Attorney. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Sarah and Todd. I'm gonna leave my camera off. I'm having bandwidth issues. I appreciate the update and certainly appreciate all of your advocacy for priorities and I am in full support. Of all fronts of this discussion. So thank you again.
Well, I'm hearing that you hit the nail on the head on what the council majority is supporting and opposing and the things that would be a priority to us. So out of the thousands of bills introduced, I appreciate you being able to siphon that down to. Issues that we will want to be acting upon. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Are there any questions or direction needed on our end before we move to the next agenda item?
I don't have any. Thank you.
I do see Councilmember Solis has her hand up, so floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm asking staff and and eventually Mayor and councils. Approval to support House Bill two one five seven, which is. An appropriation. Appropriation appropriations to support. Home and community based services. So so these are the profit providers. Who provide services to people with disabilities. And this bill is is supported by the Arizona Association of Providers for People with Disabilities. So this is using the ARPA funding to add more. So this is using the ARPA funding to add more money to, for home and community based services, group homes specifically, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas, we can definitely look into that bill and read more about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas and Ms. Langley. Any further Cs or Qs before we move forward? All right, well, with that, actually, because this is the next, we just have one more agenda item, I'm going to say let's take an eight minute break. So anyone who needs to use the restroom and then we can get at it in case this one is, if it is a bit of a longer stretch. So it's three fifty two now, let's meet back here at four o'clock real quick and then we will continue on. And thank you, Sarah and Todd. Alrighty, it is four o'clock, ready to hit the reboot here. City Clerk, are we streaming?
Mayor, we are, I'm just returning to the room.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, Mayor, are you ready for me to go ahead and get started?
Yeah, we're down to agenda item number seven, which is the discussion of charter amendments and process, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, Stacy Salzberg, City Clerk. Again, I do apologize, you don't get to see my face this evening, we're operating from council chambers, it's just set up just a little bit differently, so my apologies there, but know that I am smiling and waving hello. So today I'm here to talk a little bit about our charter amendment process and also provide some recommendations for consideration. So what is a city charter? And I know that I've been before you, before to discuss our charter, but just for a brief reminder and for the benefit of the public, I just want to provide a quick rundown on what a city charter is. The formal definition is here on the slide, but in layman's terms, the charter is the basic governing authority of the city and allows citizens to enact their own laws for their community, so long as they're not in conflict with state law. Some state laws have been identified as matters of statewide concern, in which case they can supersede a charter city's law. These adjustments in state law can sometimes bring our charter into conflict with state law and charter amendments are needed to resolve those conflicts. Regardless, on matters of statewide concern, default to the state law in those cases, even if the charter says something different. Flagstaff's charter was originally voted on and adopted in nineteen fifty eight and since then it has been amended eight times, the most recent of which was in two thousand and fifteen. Any amendment to the charter requires approval by the majority vote of the electors and each change to the charter must be presented in its own question. Doing this allows voters to vote on each item independently of other questions. The challenging part of this requirement is that when there are a lot of amendments that are needed, it's not always possible to do them all at once. So the process by which a charter is amended can vary by jurisdiction. There is no established process for amendments from the state and Flagstaff has not adopted any formal process. Staff and council can initiate charter amendments and citizens are able to propose amendments in the form of a ballot initiative. In prior years, the city manager has formed a citizen committee to review staff recommended amendments and provide an opportunity for them to provide, to propose new amendments. The proposals are ranked by the committee and a recommendation for council is formulated. Council then considers the recommendations and can call a special election for charter amendments. If an election is called, public education and outreach is conducted in advance of the election. And this is a very similar process to what you might see when there are bond questions out to the voters in terms of the education that comes forward. So over time, staff has identified over thirty necessary administrative and or technical changes that are needed to the charter. Many of these amendments are to align our charter with current practices or changes in state law. Other amendments that are being proposed, update antiquated provisions or provisions that are no longer relevant to city operations. Notably, many of these amendments have been on the docket for more than five years. While our recommendation will be to focus on the more technical and administrative amendments, I do want to acknowledge that we have heard from council in prior discussions about considerations for changes such as term limits, the term of the mayor and candidate signature requirements. My intent today is not to review each of the amendments individually, but rather focus the conversation more on process and recommendations. I did attach the list of staff identified amendments to the staff summary and I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have related to any of them. I do want to point out that the list that is attached to your staff summary is not presented in a priority order. They are simply listed in the order that they appear in the charter. So given the number of technical and administrative amendments that have been waiting, I am recommending that we focus our attention on these items specifically for the next charter amendment election. To that end, I would also recommend allowing staff to convene an internal charter review committee to review, refine and prioritize the existing requests. We know that we cannot do all of them at once, so the group would formulate a recommendation to council on questions that we would suggest advancing to the voters. As mentioned earlier, in prior years, we have convened a citizen charter committee. However, we have not received any interest in participating on the committee since we started advertising last summer. As you know, there is a significant amount of effort being directed towards the citizen bond committee, which is in full swing and they are reviewing possible bond questions for November. I do not want to take away from the important and intense work of this group and due to the technical and administrative nature of the pending amendments, we believe that an internal committee can be very effective. Lastly, I would strongly recommend bringing charter amendments forward in a twenty twenty three special election. Again, due to the number of amendments that are needed, a special election in the off season would provide an opportunity to present a number of amendments to the voters rather than only one or two if combined with a candidate or bond election. This would also allow for educational outreach that is very focused and specific to the charter and that does not have to keep with the information that may be presented for other ballot questions. The focus can really be on the charter and the importance of the needed amendments. So with that, I hope that I've provided a decent foundation for consideration and discussion. And at this time, I will turn things back to you, counsel, for any questions, discussion or direction that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Salzberg. We do have a couple of public participants. I understand, but Councilmember McCarthy has a question, if you'd like to ask that first before we start a real discussion. Happy to, happy to jump in just for clarification purposes.
Well, thank you, I have a lot of thoughts about a lot of these specifics, but I'll kind of hold off on that for now. I, I do have one question, why in, do this in twenty twenty three? Is there not time to maybe do a special election during twenty twenty two?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember McCarthy. While there is time, in my opinion, to provide questions on the November twenty twenty two ballot, I am concerned with.
Wait a minute, let me, let me stop you right there. I'm not, I'm not advocating for doing, adding these to the twenty twenty two November. I understand the reasons you don't want to do that, they were outlined very, very well. My question is, would there be time to do one maybe in August or something like that?
Thank you for the clarification.
Clifton has his hand up too.
Well, thank you, Councilmember for the question, it was the comment I was going to share anyway, so thanks for queuing it up for me. I honestly do not think is manageable from a workload perspective. I think it's a totally legitimate request, but I want to impress upon you and the entire council and the mayor what we heard from our already. The citizen bond committee is, we're all in on that when we're meeting, at the staff level, we're meeting three or four times a week, the committee itself is meeting once a week for an hour and a half, but we have meetings like just this morning, getting prepared for that. To say it's a, an arduous exercise would probably be an understatement, it's, it's very consuming and very important. In fact, we are honored to be a part of it, but it is very consuming, as you could imagine, we are grateful to the committee for, for their involvement. That process will have some ebb and flow to it along the way, but it will be in full force between now and June, when hopefully there will be deliverables coming to council in the form of recommendations. Council will be apprised between now and then, but the committee will, will be quite active in that timeframe. Subsequent to June, there's a shifting of, of priorities and, and objectives and the committee will, will still be convening, but will be doing some different things. There will be a lot of outreach and ultimately by the time a ballot measure is set, assuming one is forthcoming or more than one, members of the committee will, will be hopefully engaged in some advocacy. Where I'm going with this is, it's a very involved endeavor and will, will take a lot of time. And I think even with the idea of a special meeting in August and, and taking note of the council recess directly preceding that, I'm just trying to be realistic here, that, that I think of resource allocation is going to be quite challenging and very constrained. One more comment and I'll turn it back to you, Councilmember, and again, thank you for the question. There is some logic, I believe, and some, some wisdom in having the charter come to the voters when nothing else is, in, in between year, if you will. I think it rises to that level of importance, I think all the, the things we're talking about are very important to the voters, but I do believe rather than having two elections within a short period of time of each other, it might be prudent to see the charter come to the commission, pardon me, to the voters, to the electorate in an off year. And maybe to that, I will add one final comment, which is the, the effort to visit the, the suggested revisions to the charter and others will, will come along and some may drop off, but that's the point, it's going to be a long and thoughtful exercise if it's done right. It's not something that could be hastily accomplished, but will require a lot of effort. So those are my thoughts and comments and I'll turn it back to you at this point, thank you.
I appreciate your comments and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Clifton.
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Salzberg and City Manager and City Councilmember McCarthy. With that, let's start off with the public participants and then we can get into the meat of the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, our first public commenter is Chris Radkowski. Chris, you can go ahead and unmute now and provide your comments.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor and Counsel, my name is Chris Radkowski, I am here on behalf of Voter Choice Arizona, a nonprofit organization helping to bring ranked choice voting to Arizona. Ranked choice voting is a simple upgrade to our elections that allows voters to rank the candidates in their order of preference rather than picking just one. Ranked choice voting improves upon Flagstaff's current system because it allows voters to express their actual preferences, ensures the winner has a majority of support and eliminates the so-called wasted vote problem and spoiler effect that occurs when several, several candidates run for the same office. Best of all, ranked choice voting can do all of this with one election instead of two. That means ranked choice voting can save the city money, save the candidates money, reduce campaign sign blight and allow candidates to spend more time on issues rather than campaigns. Ranked choice voting is a win-win for voters and candidates. Ranked choice voting also protects and extends diversity among candidates and gives voters more voice and more choice. So how does it work? We all naturally know how to rank things, such as if you had to rank a Coke, Pepsi or Seven Up, you'd rank, you know, first, second and third choice. Ranked choice voting brings this idea of voting by giving voters the option to rank candidates in their order of preference. If their first, first choice doesn't win, then the candidate with the fewest voices is eliminated and their second choice vote is counted, this instant runoff process continues until one candidate receives a majority of the votes. And then that candidate, supported by a majority of voters, is the winner. Ranked choice voting isn't new, it's been gaining support in recent years, it's used in over thirty cities in their elections and that number is growing rapidly. It is also used in statewide elections in Maine and Alaska and by numerous other groups from the Republican Party in Utah to the Democratic Party in Delaware. Conducting one election instead of two will save the city money, the twenty twenty primary alone cost Flagstaff one hundred and forty five thousand dollars. And I'm sure, as you know, the election costs keep increasing, having increased over eighty percent since two thousand and twelve. In addition to the cost savings and ability to vote for your favorite candidates without having to worry about wasting a vote, voters often observe less negativity from candidates because candidates want to be voters' second choice, if not their first. It's no surprise that the reaction from voters and candidates has been very positive. Given all of these benefits, ranked choice voting has gained broad support in Arizona from voters of all political stripes. Surveys show that more than sixty percent of Arizonans support ranked choice voting. Flagstaff, seventy seven percent express support for ranked choice voting in state elections. That seventy seven percent of voters agree on anything is certainly amazing. And it's safe to say that this would translate to a large majority of Flagstaff residents supporting the move to ranked choice voting. In sum, Flagstaff should adopt ranked choice voting because it is a better way to elect you than our current system. It will save you and the city of Flagstaff money and voters won. Thank you for your time, both myself and Voter Choice Arizona are happy to answer any questions now or in the future and provide any further resources, thanks.
Thank you, Chris, and perfect timing on that front. Any comments or questions before we move on to the next participant? I'm not seeing any at this time, so please, yeah, queue up the next commenter.
Thank you, Mayor, our next commenter is Kathy Necht. Kathy, you can go ahead and unmute and offer your comments now.
Thank you, um, my camera won't work, right?
Your camera should work if you'd like to use it.
Well, I, it's not working, so I will just go on. I want to thank the mayor and the vice mayor and the council for allowing me to speak today. My name is Kathy Connect and I'm an executive team member with Voter Choice Arizona. And we would love to see Flagstaff pursue a charter amendment, of course, sooner than later and become really a leader among the Arizona cities in election reform. I want to follow up on the important points that Chris Radkowski made about ranked choice voting, especially as it relates to the cities in Flagstaff. Ranked choice voting is also known as instant runoff voting because it eliminates the need for expensive runoffs which rarely attract the same amount of participation by voters. It's easy to see how ranked choice voting can save money, but eliminating the need for an additional election does more than save taxpayers' dollars. It spares citizens from an extended campaign season in which they're bombarded with mailers and phone calls and their street corners are littered with campaign signs. That's an especially unfortunate situation among the beautiful vistas in Flagstaff. And my personal favorite benefit of ranked choice voting is that it reduces negative campaigning. There were four studies between twenty thirteen and twenty twenty conducted by Fair Vote and voters consistently reported more positive campaigning. It approved the quality of debate, it generated more positive language and voters reported observing less negativity. It eliminates the incentive to destroy the competition. Former Mayor Betsy Hodges from Minneapolis, where ranked choice voting has been a huge success, said that there was relatively little elbowing and attacking because every candidate wanted to be the second choice of their opponent's supporters. Finally, RCV, ranked choice voting avoids the lesser of two evils dilemma. So voters won't feel compelled to use their only choice on the one candidate they think can win. They can rank candidates in order that they want them to win. It promotes sincere voting or strategic voting and results in more people satisfied with the election outcomes. Shorter, kinder, more efficient elections can surely improve people's quality of life in Flagstaff. And it might just improve people's attitude about elections in general and increase voter participation overall. Getting more people, more choice and more voice is what ranked choice voting is all about. I want to thank you for my three minutes and I hope you'll give it deep consideration. I want to thank you for my three minutes and I hope you'll give it deep consideration.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Uh, just to check, that is our last, uh, public participant?
Yes, Mayor, that was the last one.
All right, any comments or questions of the speaker from, uh, council? All right, I'm not seeing it, any at this time. Um, with that, uh, I think what it comes down to here, council, is a few, um. Uh, questions we need addressed, uh, to be able to move forward or otherwise. But first, uh, would we like to form a, if we want to form a charter amendment committee, whether internal or external? When we might want to see the, uh, charter amendments on the ballot in terms of a special election or otherwise? And what are our priorities amidst the many things that are on the list? Uh, the thirty-four that have been, uh, presented on our agenda that were compiled from a former, uh, charter, uh, amendment committee? Um, and yeah, I, I'd love to hear your thoughts. Uh, my personal opinion is that this does need to be separate from our general election. There's going to be way too much on there. We have already are, um, probably going to have, well, potentially going to have several bond measures. Um, the amount of time it takes to get to that is, um, can be onerous in such a short amount of time. I would like to suggest that we do have this committee, uh, formed. If it is internal, uh, to start off with, particularly with the many administrative, um. Amendments that have been proposed to help prioritize that, I think that's a good thing. Uh, if we decide that ranked choice voting should be among them, then I do really, really strongly think we need to have this to be a, either in addition to. Um, or some way it needs to be a citizen city. A ranked choice voting change is something that, uh, we need to be part of the public discourse. I mean, it's, it can be a little, uh, complicated to some folks. And we need to make sure that the public is on board with that if we're proposing a special election. Um, aside from that, I would propose that we prepare accordingly. And that we think about having a special election in November twenty twenty-three to give us the proper time. Uh, with the, uh, potential amendments and public consideration and outreach. Especially with such a large change as ranked choice voting may be. There are a lot of specificities that would need to be worked out. Uh, I'll just, and, um, yes, I could give it into that, but we'll, we'll get into too much detail. But, uh, what I would like to see is that we do move forward with this. We plan for a special election in twenty twenty-three, preferably in November twenty twenty-three. And my priorities on the list that has been, um, provided to us by, uh, the city clerk from a prior, uh, amendment committee. Would be that we strongly need to consider ranked choice voting. That we need to look at the signature requirements because right now, city council and Flagstaff. Has the highest signature requirement of any city in Arizona with seventy thousand population. Uh, it takes a thousand signatures to run for city council or for mayor down in Phoenix, Glendale, et cetera. And we're sitting at sixteen hundred this year. Uh, and the other part would be on that list, the procurement process that is very onerous, that prevents us from getting, uh. Quick action towards very important things. Um, those are very, those are three very important things. Uh, in addition, I would like to look at the leadership restrictions, um, that right now you have to be within city limits. That I think also prevents from good applicants from applying to director level positions and above within the city of Flagstaff. Um, and I will stop there because I, I do have more, but I'm talking now for an extended amount of time. So to sum up, uh, as we have this discussion and it's a matter of, should we form, form these committees? If we want to form the committees, when we should potentially plan on the timeline for a special election, potentially? And what are the priorities on that list of us as individual council members for strong consideration? For, uh, that committee if we decide that that's the route we would like to go? So with that, I will open it up to other council members and I see Vice Mayor is coming.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, thank you, Stacy. I think I've said this before, but I was on the, um, the amendment committee last time one was formed. And I can assure you that we went through the charter, um, in fine detail and looked at charters around the state. And so I feel comfortable just having an internal committee. Um, because I know that the charter has been pretty recently vetted. And, um, I would like council to discuss ranked choice voting in the meantime. And then maybe we can decide whether, um. I would just like to have more information to discuss it and then we can, um, talk about what the next step is. For ranked choice voting, if there is, um, a next step, but I would, I would really like to have that conversation. And I am okay with everything that's on the list to, uh, be discussed. There's nothing on there that, um, on the, the list that Stacy provided us, the document. There's nothing on there that, um, that I would be opposed to seeing come back to us with recommendations to put it on the, um, on the agenda. So, uh, you know, I don't really have, have priorities there. I'd just like to see us, our charter sync with, um, state statutes. And I'd like staff to feel comfortable that all the administrative changes that, that need to happen are, um, have happened. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shumoni.
Thank you, Mayor and Stacy, thank you for the presentation. Um, I think, I think we're on the same page, um, at least from who I've heard from, Mayor yourself and Vice Mayor. I, I agree with what's being discussed. Uh, Mayor, I agree with your concerns about the signature requirement. Um, I'd like to see that adjusted to make, to lower that bar to be on the ballot for future, um, council members. And I also would like to see us have a larger community discussion around ranked choice voting. And I don't know what the process looks like for that, Mayor. I think your comments were, were pretty on point in, in how to set that out. But we can maybe dive into that detail later, assuming there's council support to move forward with exploring ranked choice voting. Um, I'm intrigued. I've been intrigued for a long time about this concept. And I'd also ask that we have a, uh, executive session. Mayor and, and Sterling, our city attorney, to discuss ranked choice voting. Um, when, if there is direction to move forward with that. But, um, in terms of the process, the discussion we're having today, I fully support a amendment committee, a charter amendment committee. And that that committee be internal. Um, I appreciate those who served on that committee in the past, Vice Mayor yourself included. And, uh, I also support what you said about a special election in, in twenty twenty-three. I don't know if that's November or when, but, um, I, I have a feeling that internal committee will come back to us with some good recommendations. And I also support us really moving forward with the procurement process and the, uh, cap on the amounts. You know, we're proposing a hundred thousand dollars and that being up fifty thousand dollars. And after giving that some thought and talking to some folks, uh, I do think that that's appropriate. That committee can work on that and come back to us as well with this about that. But I think that's important that we, we up that, that amount, um, given that times are changing. And also just the process of our procurement in general. Um, those points that were in the presentation regarding the term of mayor and the term limits. Uh, personally, I'm not really intrigued or in favor of really diving into that further. But I also respect that I'm one member of council. So whatever the wisdom of the collective is, I'll, you know, get behind. But I think that focusing on the signature requirement is my top priority of those three different points on that slide. And, uh, just wanted to thank, you know, Chris and Kathy and those involved with Voter Choice Arizona for engaging with us. And I really do hope that we take some deep consideration of ranked choice voting. And then lastly, uh, Mayor, your comment about, uh, location of where someone resides, who's in a leadership position of the city. I think we need to look at that and that committee needs to talk and discuss that as well. I think it's time to expand that limitation from, um, city limits to, to county. To allow for more, um, qualified individuals to, to, to live in, in the area and serve the community. Um, I think I've addressed all the points that we need to talk about tonight. And if not, I'll circle back, but, uh, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. Uh, Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I agree that this should not be on the November twenty-two, um, election. Uh, it's just too much for the voters to deal with. Um, I think we should do it as soon as possible. And that might be November twenty-three, but it might be like March or August or whenever, uh, in twenty-three. So I would like to do it as soon as possible, but, uh. I'm realizing that that'll probably be in twenty-three. Um, should we form a committee? Yes, and I believe it can be internal. Uh, as other people have said, but I also agree that if we get into ranked choice voted, voting. That that committee might want to be an outside committee. Um, at least on that one subject. Um, I'm very intrigued with ranked choice voting and I've actually done quite a bit of research on it. But I, that research has yielded a couple of things. One is I like it and it has some obvious advantages. But it's also apparent that it's not quite as simple as the first look. There are complications, you know, on how people might vote. There's, you know, we have to look into what the county who runs our elections have the software to handle it, et cetera. So it's not a real easy yes, no choice, but I do believe that it is worth looking into. Um, the signature requirement, this came up one other time since I was on council and I was against changing the rule. But after reconsideration, I believe that that should be on the list. I would suggest that a thousand signatures or five percent of the turnout of the last election, whichever is smaller. Or something along that line. So definitely that's a high priority for me. I believe the requirement that our, uh, managers live in the city can be visited. I think that we can be a little more flexible on that. I don't think we should make it they could just live anywhere, like in Phoenix or Colorado or whatever. But I think they could live within maybe fifteen, twenty miles of the city limits or something like that. I think there's room for some compromise there, which could maybe result in us getting higher quality people. Apparently, we're not going to go over the whole list tonight. And I will tell you, there are some things on that list that I do not support. Just to give one example, I do not support the idea of ordinances being finalized on the first read. I think there's good reasons that we have a second read on ordinances. And I can think of three or four cases where things changed between the first read and the second read. And usually for the better. And I think, you know, the goal of government, not to be efficient, yes, that is one of our goals. But it's also to be deliberative and careful. And ordinances have long range implications. And I think it's more important that we consider them carefully and have a second read. So, and, you know, admittedly, a lot of the things in the list are administrative. Obviously, I would support those type of things. I'm open-minded about changing some of the other amounts that are referenced in the list. That's kind of a summary of where my head's at. If there's any, uh, ambiguities about council direction towards the end, I can weigh in on more specifics. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Uh, Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I need to leave my camera off. Um, I have a question and this might be for Stacy. Do we have any, um, data on when the voter turnout is best on special elections? March, May, August, November? Is there one particular time that's better than the other?
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Um, we do have some data. I don't have it directly at my fingers right now, but what I can share with you is that since we have moved to a consolidated election cycle, which is. Um, you know, holding our candidate elections in conjunction with, you know, state and federal races. Our turnout has been higher. Um, we do not generally see as high of a voter turnout in off years. Um, but I'd be happy to provide those specifics, um, to you at a later time.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go down my list. Um, I definitely feel we should do a special election in twenty twenty-three. Um, the month will be determined. A, an internal charter committee, I'm definitely all for. And some things that I highlighted, the boards and commissions and the administrative, um, having to live in the city limits. I think it is a good idea to expand that ten miles out, fifteen, twenty miles out. Um, but having some type of cap on how far out of the city they can live. Uh, I would like to relook at the signature requirement. I think it's getting to the point where we're really hindering who can run for office. And I would also like a larger discussion on ranked choice voting. And if we do go down that road, I, I do believe having an outside committee, um, down the road with that would be good. So that is what I have so far. Thank you for putting this together, Stacy.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. I'll go to Councilmember Aslan and then Councilmember Salas.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Um, so it looks like we already have direction on several issues here, so I'm not going to belabor these points. Um, twenty twenty-three, uh, its own election. I think that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, I heard the city clerk mentioned something about elected terms, terms for mayor. I don't see that in the packet. Um, if, if it's in there, let me know which number that is.
Councilmember Aslan, I'm happy to address that really quickly. Um, it is not included in the packet that was presented. Um, I just was acknowledging that we have heard that in the past from council, but it hasn't been part of that administrative, um, recommendation.
Okay, well, no need to, yeah, it does. Thank you. I just, I heard it mentioned and then, um, it, it didn't know where that was in the packet. You know, I, I do want to talk about the signature gathering issue just a little bit. Uh, you know, I'm in the throes of gathering signatures for reelection and city council and sixteen hundred minimum. Uh, is a heavy threshold. There's a lot of us on council right now running and, um, having to be burdened by that, uh, high threshold. You know, it is a little bit high. I, I think, I think there's room for conversation of lowering that. I don't know that we need to go to the least common denominator of what, what other cities are doing around the state of Flagstaff. We are our own beast here and we don't have to just pour our bar, um, based off of what other people are doing. I, I do think we need to make sure that, uh, we're not restricting folks from getting on the ballot. I also don't think that it's that much of a difficulty to gather signatures. I'm going to be successful at doing it. Others are going to be successful at doing it. Um, I just want to give a moment for folks to, you know, cautiously consider the implications of this. Uh, you know, it, getting on the ballot shouldn't be a cake lock. Uh, there's, there's a purpose to the, the, that first sort of hurdle, right? Um, and the most important thing to me, and this is something that's very special, is the conversations, the touchstones, the, the, the touchpoints that come out of it with constituents. Uh, we want to make sure that people can get on the ballot, but we also want to make sure that our electors, our constituents, our voters. sure that our electors, our constituents, our voters, have an opportunity to talk to candidates and for candidates to vet their positions and not just, you know, slide onto a ballot where uh, there's, there's been no lift there. Um, we could end up with primaries that have twenty candidates. Uh, so anyway, I think there's room to calibrate this, for sure. I'm a little concerned about the way the language is stated, and I have number twenty-four. You know, uh, in the actual language, it just says, "or as otherwise set by city ordinance" as the amendment. And I realize that Arizona Revised Statute sixteen-three-twenty-two-a-eight uh, provides that the minimum must be one thousand or five percent of the vote. I would guess that we're not gonna have many elections in which there's five percent of the vote is less than a thousand. Um, I hope our voters are more engaged than that in this city of seventy thousand people. But the point here is that it seems like that is subject to state-level preemption, right? The state could suddenly say, "Well, you only need to collect twelve signatures to get on the ballot." And so what is, what is our Sydney or city ordinance language going to be? Is it going to follow the, the minimum provided by the Arizona Revised Statutes? Or is it gonna be an ordinance that is dictated by a process that we decide up here in Flagstaff? So those are just some questions uh, to consider with regard to signature gathering. I don't think it's a problem that candidates need to gather a ton of signatures in order to get on the ballot. I do think there's room for improvement on what that number should be. I, I actually, I certainly think that we, we should be able to collect signatures later into the season. Uh, it's, it's cold up here in the winter, and it feels like it's a very early deadline this year. Um, and that's unfortunate because it impedes upon that ability to, you know, stand there at the curb and have longer conversations with folks. We also have uh, a way to collect signatures online now. So there is already an allowance built into the system that allows some pressure release there, where there's multiple avenues for collecting signatures, and there's different ways to have those conversations and to reach that threshold. So uh, obviously, there's already, you know, um, direction for moving forward on that. I, I, I'm in supportive of that as well. I just want to sort of telegraph to everybody, you know, a note of caution about where we, where we calibrate that to. Um, I don't think the process doesn't work in Flagstaff. I think it does work, and we don't need to uh, fix something that's not broken. Um, so just, just a cautionary note there. I'll leave it at that. Um, we already have direction on other things, and uh, that's, that's where I'll leave the conversation right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Um, Councilmember Salas.
Um, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I support uh, this, this item moving forward and convene a charter review committee. Uh, I, I will, um, I look forward to a more um, engaged uh, conversation with the community um, in furtherance of the staff recommended amendments, as well as, you know, the community may, may have, may have so, some, some uh, um, topics and issues that they want to amend uh, on the charter. Um, and um, and uh, looking forward to a special election and charter amendment. Some of, some of the, some of the conversations I, I've had randomly in the community, um, you know, being immersed, it's like, uh, um, I had questions about, I had received questions about uh, districts within the city. Uh, I had heard questions about uh, why the, uh, the police and, and the fire association cannot negotiate uh, for, for a collective agreement with respect to, to salary benefits uh, and fringe benefits and other stuff, um, kind of like a collective bargaining agreement and other issues that, that may come up that would, that the city, uh, the, the community in our, within our city would um, wanna bring up as we engage the community in discussing, amending the charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Uh, Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you. I think Mr. Aslan made some excellent points, but we don't want to get the signature requirements to be so low that we get fifty candidates on the ballot. Um, and it should be uh, a little bit on the burdensome side, because it's very important that uh, we have conversations face-to-face with people, and I think the higher signature count um, brings that out. So, on the other hand, I, I do think we can put some limits on it. I suggested a thousand before. Bear in mind, if there, if the rule is a thousand, you really need to go out and get thirteen-hundred, because some of them aren't gonna be good. So it's a little more burdensome than it seems. Uh, I do think that whatever number we agree to, it should be in the charter. It should not just be subject to state law, and that way we have control of it. It has to be consistent with state law, but we should also have uh, our own minimums in there. So uh, that's my comment on, on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Yeah, uh, well, I guess before I uh, get in, City Clerk has a comment, so um, please feel free to jump in.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, what, what we're hearing from, from the group in terms of, um, you know, signature requirements and those sorts of things. I, I would be remiss if I, you know, didn't just kind of put in there that, um, you know, we are preempted on, on many of, of these concerns that are raised, but um, as we move through this process, um, myself and legal will, will convene and will, will be sure to bring forward to you, you know, some of those concerns that we see from our side as well. Um, so understand that those will all be wrapped into the bigger discussion that we have. Um, when we come back to you with things, with, with our recommendations and things that we are perhaps suggesting um, that we move forward. So I just, I just wanted to put that acknowledgement out there and just know that there will be larger discussions happening in the future with those.
Thank you, City Clerk. Um, yeah, I will, uh, just to kind of recap, I really appreciate this discussion and uh, council on where your minds at as our, as our collective. Um, few things to note, right now in the city of Flagstaff, we have the largest signature account, a signature requirement of any city in all of Arizona. It takes a thousand signatures to get on the ballot in Phoenix as, you know, let's say, Mayor, a thousand signatures, or Glendale, or Mesa, uh, in populations uh, far exceeding our own. And uh, these signatures are extremely important for the exact reasons that you've outlined, Councilmember Aslan. I really appreciate you um, enunciating that. Uh, we, um, but I do see a thousand, which is the standard in so many other municipalities outside of state law even, not just the ARS, but a thousand signatures, I, I feel, is a very good number, and, you know, we'll see what the committees feel like, but just remember that five years ago, it never exceeded a thousand, because we were having elections in May of odd years, and therefore, the signature requirement really was around six to seven hundred before uh, the twenty-eighteen election. So it was the twenty-eighteen where that number popped up. Um, so, and I do feel that at that time before twenty-eighteen, you know, that was a good number for uh, people to get, to show that they're serious, to have good conversations. Uh, so anyways, we'll get into those details at a later time. Um, but the one thing I really wanted to bring up by uh, jumping in here was that I think it's important to have the internal task force for administrative decisions, but when we're talking election reform, when we're talking signature requirements or ranked choice voting, we have to have a, a, a community um, committee. Uh, that's a different beast. So uh, I know, I, I'd love to hear some input maybe from you, City Clerk or City Manager, about maybe having a, a kind of a dual um, path here, where administrative priorities uh, with city charter amendments uh, is discussed with our internal task force, so we can get that started right away and uh, get some good information. But, I mean, I do not feel comfortable but, to go to ranked choice voting without an outside um, committee to discuss this. And that, that's important, not just for putting it on there, but in terms of creating that community discussion, making sure people understand what it means. And um, if I say, if I went on the quarter and said to somebody walking their dog, "Hey, do you like ranked choice voting?", they would have no idea what I'm talking about. So um, anyways, that's, that's where I'm at, that those are kind of two different beasts that would be, yes, amending the same document, but uh, needing different eyes on it. And yeah, uh, City Manager, if you want to chime in.
Well, thank you. Um, I will not get into details on, on that topic, because again, I think that is best left for future times and future discussions. I would agree that on the topic of uh, ranked choice voting, there should be a larger committee and outside uh, uh, eyes upon it, as you mentioned, Mayor. I would add to that. It might be who bus. I would recommend uh, that we, communities that have tried it, um, and we have communities nearby and uh, not too far in Colorado, there, there were four, or actually, there were three communities that had approved it. Uh, one has been added to that list, and two have been removed from that list. One of those communities, I happen to serve, Tom and Telluride, had ranked voting, was put in their charter years ago, and it's now uh, out of their charter. It was also approved in the city of Aspen, uh, and the voters have repealed it. That said, things have changed in Colorado to make things easier for localities to perform ranked choice voting. Notably, last year, I believe, state legislature was adopted to allow the Secretary of State in Colorado to take the necessary measures to provide guidelines and assistance for municipalities to do ranked choice voting. That was a game changer. In Arizona, we have a lot more discussion to have, because I do not believe we have legislation currently that, that would facilitate that. That is all subject to a future discussion. There are so many details, and as has been noted earlier, there, there are legal questions to be addressed in executive session, uh, but I'm just touching on some of the complications and some of the, the hurdles that other places have overcome to make uh, that particular voting methodology work. Um, so I look forward to the discussion, and I do believe it should have uh, many eyes upon it when it does occur. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, Mr. Clifton. You really kind of nailed my comments right on the head. I, I don't disagree at all. I do believe that when we start talking about, um, again, more of these policy-related, although they may be somewhat, you know, administrative in, in functionality, they are policy-related matters, and, and those certainly um, demand the attention of, of a wider group in our community. So um, I think those, those conversations will naturally um, occur with our community, and we will be very mindful of that as we um, dive deeper into, you know, what we want to see, you know, come forward and, and where we need to integrate um, a deeper community involvement and discussion. Um, and I anticipate future discussions, not only at the council level, but um, foreseeably with the, you know, boards and commissions as a starting point. So um, we do hear you and, and certainly um, agree that that would be something that would need to occur with these more policy-related questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's uh, just to kind of uh, wrap it up here, we do have consensus to be um, really looking at a twenty-twenty-three special election for the purposes of a uh, of potentially multiple city charter amendments. We're all on board with an internal task force um, to this purpose. Uh, what I would like to get clarified would, would be um, with the rest of council, the citizen committee, that we also, in tandem, um, have a citizen committee also reaching out to have this discussion. I, I just, when we're changing basically the constitution of the city of Flagstaff, it makes me real uncomfortable to leave that to an internal uh, committee. Um, though, I want to get started on this. We need to deliberate. Uh, our city staff are very much uh, experts on this area and are extremely valuable uh, in how this course uh, plays out. But I do want to hear from council in terms of how we would like to approach the internal committee versus an external committee and what that would look like. Uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I agree that if uh, we decide to move forward, if we think that we'd like to put ranked choice voting on the ballot, that we have an outside committee. Um, but for the time being, I think that council can have some conversations about it, um, so that we can see what the next step is, whether it's something that we're interested in moving forward and then having um, a bigger discussion about. Uh, so I guess I'm, I'm not ready to definitively say that I want to have um, an external task force on it. I'd like to have a discussion about it and get some information about it and um, and explore it a little bit before I chime in on that. All of the rest of the items, including how many signatures, uh, I'm comfortable with an internal committee and then coming to council, because it will, all of those items will be discussed in council meetings, and then voters have the final say when it goes to the ballot. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with all of those, but I agree, ranked choice voting, if um, we're thinking that we'd like to have it on a ballot, that, that we vet it more thoroughly before it's on the ballot.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And uh, just a quick question um, for staff. So there, we didn't seem to get interest in it a year ago for forming a committee for this purpose. Um, i- is that, is it already still open for that possibility?
Sorry, Mayor, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, sorry, go ahead.
Um, yes, it is still advertised on our board and commission vacancy page. Um, it is, it's been open since we um, had a discussion, yeah, a little, I know it was probably before we went on break last year. Um, so it's been out there, but we have not seen um, any initial interest coming in um, on that, but we're happy to continue to advertise that and uh, try to gain some, some interest.
Okay, cool. So that doesn't, so we're in a position where it's not, right now, we have to initiate something. It's, it is already out there for consideration. What really we're discussing is whether to also um, add in an internal um, committee to be addressing uh, and prioritizing the uh, charter amendments, which I do believe we have consensus on here.
Thank you, Mayor, and if I could add, I think that's part of what prompted my discussion with, with you all tonight is, you know, we see a need to, to try to move the needle on this, and um, we haven't been successful in, in getting that external committee put together, and we'd like to try to get things moving. And perhaps as we have further discussions with council as time goes on, we may, we may see that interest um, increase. So I think that's the hope right now.
Well, then, that kind of uh, solves any of the extra questions that would, would need to be clarified, but uh, anything else that city staff would need from council right now for further direction on this purpose?
Mayor, I believe I've gotten the direction that I need. I just want to offer some gratitude in allowing us to have this discussion this evening. It's been very helpful from my perspective in um, kind of moving very much.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. And I, and I do appreciate uh, the rest of council and um, us willing to move forward and really willing to make some changes in the best interest, and I'm glad that we're saying uh, pretty well together on that front. With that, we are down to agenda item number eight, which is public participation. Do we have anyone else uh, on that front?
Mayor, we do not.
All right, and it brings us down to agenda item number nine, which is the informational items, two from Mayor, council, and All right, and brings us down to agenda item number nine, which is the informational items two from mayor, council and city manager, as well as future agenda item requests. Um, well, we'll just, let's do it by roll call then. Um. Uh, vice mayor Daggan.
Thank you, mayor. Um, the only thing that I have is whether I should ask for a discussion of ranked choice voting as a fair item. Um, or whether just our general direction to staff previously will get us that discussion.
May I respond, mayor?
Yes, please do.
I believe we have our direction and I think it's been very well articulated. And I think requiring a fair item is just an unnecessary layer at this point. You can, you can plan on this happening as you ask for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I have nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rassen.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin.
Okay. Can you see me? Can you hear me? I don't, my my screen is turned. Okay.
You're good to go.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, as I as I mentioned, uh, uh, our discussion earlier on, um. On legislative updates, uh, the the House Bill two three nine, two s- two three nine six was passed by. The Transportation and Technology Co- Committee, eleven to one. And um, and that that's just, that's just the first step to have it enacted uh into law by both chambers. Um, I have a question, maybe perhaps a follow-up uh update or even a CCR. If 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 that's even a a an option about my two fair items that I um submitted last year. And gained a council support uh about the business one-stop shop. Business one-stop shop online portal and business one-stop shop service desk at the ci- city hall for business resources and services from startups to to business expansion. And I believe council has um, if my memory serves me correct. A council has allocated seventy-five thousand for this uh, this um endeavor. And also um, another fer- fair item uh that requests council to bolster economic development by creating funding or robust workforce development program. To expand and strengthen co- core workforce development efforts by the city. So follow up in that, and I believe we have, we have arti- art- iterated that priority as well. Uh, on our state and federal lobbying priorities. Just a follow-up, that is report some kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is appropriate time for response? Should that be something that we put together for an uh emailed for a follow-up or city manager?
I I believe our city clerk may have information as to where that exists on the work, working calendar. Stacy, are you prepared? Okay. She's retrieving it. Allow us, if we may, mayor and council to forward that information. We'll send it to all of you. If it as to where those uh are, I know they've been discussed. I'm, I, we are all aware of them. But we'll give you specific dates once we have that at our fingertips. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Uh, with that, we'll move on to Councilmember Shumoni.
Thank you, mayor. Um, as most of you know, we had our budget retrieved last week. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank staff and leadership and the council for a good budget retreat. I thought we covered a lot of ground and um moving forward. I I really appreciate that, those important long conversations we have. Um, yesterday, the Kocano County nine-one-one diversion meeting occurred. It's a monthly group that comes together and uh just wanted to highlight that there's some really good efforts in the pipeline. Uh, working in partnership between our police department and Chief Muslin and his team, along with the crisis response network. Down at the state level and and with tariffs locally, of course, in the mix as well. Uh, and health choices at the table as well. So uh stay posted on updates from those efforts. But there's some really exciting things that we're working on uh to better serve the public in response to the call. Um, there is a Lone Tree site visit for a lot of the council members tomorrow, eleven thirty AM. And I'm really looking forward to that that discussion and site visit with all of you. Um, so thank you to staff and all of you for making time for that really important site visit. And along with tomorrow, there's the CJCC Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Executive Committee from three to five PM. And those meetings are open to the public. And Stacy and city manager, uh, there were talks at previous meetings of adding those agendas. And links to those stream to our council or our website agenda page. So it's probably too late this time around, but in the future, uh Stacy, we should see if we get that added to our website. And we can talk about that offline and connecting those dots. But three to five PM tomorrow is an important meeting. And lastly, um, this upcoming Monday in a week almost today. The Kocano County COVID update meeting is occurring at eight-thirty in the morning, and I look forward to being there. And on the topic of COVID, very glad to see the numbers starting to really come down. Um, it looks like in our report that was shared with us from our deputy city manager, Anderson, um, from one-twenty-nine. So a little bit outdated a week ago, the numbers are continuing to trend downward. And um, to Councilor Asland's uh comments at our recent meeting on this. Um, I think the data is going to reflect what it is that we need to show for us to be back in person. So very exciting stuff. We'll continue to track that and uh have a great week, everybody, and and good meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. Um, and then Councilmember Sweet. And then I just got notice from Councilman Rasslin that he did have uh one comment he wanted to make, but we'll go to Councilmember Sweet first.
Nothing from me tonight. Um, thank you, everyone, and thank you, Councilmember Solis for clarifying. It's twelve-thirty tomorrow, the Lone Tree site visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rasslin.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted to mention, I I will not be able to join the group tomorrow for the Lone Tree overpass tour. Uh, I want to be there. I was hoping we could maybe arrange for a different time that would allow my attendance. I am double booked right then for an important meeting as the chair of the Kocanino Plateau Water Advisory Council. We are engaging in a rural groundwater conversation. Um, there's some, uh, in my view, troubling policies coming down the pike. At the state legislative level around how to manage rural groundwater. And we've got a crack team um of stakeholders from uh far and wide coming together to discuss this. Troubling development, and so I will be busy doing that. And I also just wanted to mention on my own that I just want to kind of telegraph to folks that I'm feeling very bullish about our COVID situation myself. I have lived and died by the sword of CDC guidelines in the past, and I will continue to do that. Um, just as part of my own policy thinking. But, you know, in in my mind personally, I I'm happy to share with you that I think it's time to start having a conversation soon. About how we move back through that ladder of COVID mitigations in the city. And maybe even start backing off of mask requirements and leave that as voluntary activity. Um, I would love to be able to see all of your beautiful faces at council meetings once we return back. And that's a drum that I'm going to start beating here shortly. Once it's appropriate to do so, once we see those numbers confirmed and once CDC guideline. Once CDC guidelines are in line with that. So just some, just some thoughts to share with folks moving forward. It is a bit of a telegraph. I'm not saying we're there yet. I'm saying I'm just sharing my thinking on some of these things and hoping that uh we can breathe easy. In each other's company um before too much longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. And uh, just as note to the public, we, next Tuesday, we will be in our formal COVID nineteen update. And be able to have a broader discussion about um steps forward thereafter. So uh, stay tuned on that as our city manager would say. Um, thank you, and I'll I'll just uh mention, uh, basically, I I do have one uh future agenda item request. And this is to create a real only dig once policy uh for the city of Flagstaff. This means that anyone, any of the utilities who dig hole on public property, like our streets. That it is fair game for uh other entities to be doing work in that hole. So that would mean that if we need to fix a water line, well, that's now open to APS or Unisource to be able to also work in that section. Similarly, that works the other way around as well. So that way, it creates greater efficiency with our utilities in general. Uh, it allows us to not have to dig up, dig down, dig up, dig down. Uh, to be able to, for example, for the city, repair clay water lines, et cetera. Uh, but anyways, I think it's time to really consider what that would look like. Uh, to really set up a only dig once policy where if you dig a hole on city streets or on the public property. That it's fair game for everyone to do the repairs that they need or additions they need in in the ground. So that is my future agenda item request to present tonight. And um, city manager, I understand you have uh a little addition for this evening. And you are muted.
Thank you, mayor.
We almost made one for me.
Yeah, yeah. I do not have a fair request. Um, I would like to uh give some very due recognition to our friend and colleague Shane Dilly. Uh, it occurs to us that this is his last meeting. We've seen the announcement in the paper and it's, I'm sure, gotten around the community. Uh, that Shane uh has taken a position as the new city manager in Sahara. Uh, down south, uh, he will be starting that new journey very quickly. So we have him here uh for a few more days and because this is his last council meeting. And because this council meeting is livestreamed to our community and to the entire universe. I thought it would be appropriate uh to recognize Mr. Dilly and send him off uh with with some positive vibes. Uh, as he makes this incredible um change, uh forward progression in his career path. Uh, Shane has been uh dedicated to uh Flagstaff. His dedication has been unwavering through. Uh, he brings, he he brings to the table a very pleasant demeanor, which we have all come to really appreciate. It's it's been very refreshing uh when, you know, things get a little bit stressful or tense or complicated or challenging and all of the above. Uh, Shane always seems to keep his cool and uh that's been, that's been a wonderful attribute. Uh, I've enjoyed his communication style. He's a great listener. He brings a positive uh position to things, always thinking ahead, always thinking uh in a in a forward progress. So those are my comments about our friend and colleague Shane Dilly. He will be missed. It'll be uh hard to fill his shoes. Uh, we'll take our time doing so. Um, we all wish him uh the very uh best going down south where he uh to some uh extent will be returning to his old digs. Or close to his old digs. So Shane, thanks for joining us. Thanks for letting me uh yak a little bit about you. And we'd love to hear from you if you have some comments to share. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Um, really, the the comments are humbling. I I uh not quite sure if they're fair or not. But uh, but I really appreciate uh the gesture. Uh, mayor and council, um, I remember. Uh, really, it's six years ago, uh thi- this this month, um, I think it was the sixteenth of February and uh twenty sixteen. Um, that I that I first started with the with the city. But I I remember leaving city hall after a grueling interview process. Um, and uh, and not really knowing exactly what the outcome was going to be, certainly hopeful. I had had my eyes um uh on Flagstaff and this wonderful community and and an amazing talented team uh for many years. Um, and uh, I remember walking out to my car uh in the west parking lot. And before I got to my car, uh, city manager Josh Copely um was ringing my my phone. And said that he did not want me to go the weekend without knowing the outcome of the of the interview process. That that wouldn't be very fair. And he uh proceeded to tell me that um that he was working with HR to prepare an offer. And I just remember, I mean, at the time, I was the city manager in Nogales and and I remember um literally, you know, five and a half hours of pinching myself. Saying, is this reality? I mean, is this, is this really happening? Am I really going to have an opportunity to to be here in Flagstaff? Um, working uh with this amazing leadership team in providing services to uh such a beautiful community. Um, that was a reality, and I often have continued to pinch myself saying, wow, this is a, this is, this is, this is the best of the best. And and it really is. And so as I, as I uh approach my my final days in the organization, it it is met with kind of a bittersweet. Um, I'm I'm leaving to take a job um that really is um, really is what I went to school to do. And that's to be a city manager and to um to um provide leadership in the community in 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 that capacity. Um, uh, but I I I do so, having been benefited greatly by the experience um that I now claim as mine. Um, from my tenure and 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 time here in Flagstaff. Um, but but it is met with uh mixed emotion. And I think about the mixed emotion and I, and I uh, and I, and I, and I'm reminded of a a quote by Beth Moore. Uh, she said, "The pain of a hard goodbye uh is the heart's tribute to the privilege to love." And, you know, you spend, you spend uh so much of your waking time um with uh. People that we have in our in in our team, uh, our leadership team, you as council members and the council members that I've served. Um, previously here in Flagstaff and the community members itself. Uh, you can't help but to establish love for for others. And uh, in the, in the act of public service, um, it really is driven much um by um feelings of giving and volunteerism. Um, and lifting other people around you. Uh, if that's not love, I don't really know what is. And 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 I, you know, I I I think about um the feelings that I have in leaving and and I really will miss um the association. Uh, I hope that relationships have been formed such that um those interactions continue for a lifetime. Uh, but I wanted to thank the council in this, in this wonderful community for being such gracious hosts of the Dilly family for the last six years. Uh, we have truly enjoyed it and um and uh will will miss it uh deeply. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane, and all of your service to this community. Um, uh, we we are sorry to see you go, but we are also excited for your uh new adventure with your family and your new leadership. And a uh, and a town that I know will appreciate it uh as much, if not more than here. So your leadership will be missed, but we'll definitely continue on to serving the public like you do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
All right, with that, um, I do believe that this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for the great conversation, council and city staff, and uh we'll see you for Tuesday for a packed agenda.